Let's begin with the pledge from our seats, please. Thank you, Julie. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Is there any support?
I support that.
All right, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Thank you. All right, Julie, do we have any public participation?
We do have one.
Hey, Burgett.
I have an email that came in this afternoon. It is from a combination of three people, from Mike Luna, from Adrian Luna, and Crystal Pashek. I hope I'm saying her name properly. All parents of Lake Orion students. Here's the email. "We represent a group of concerned taxpayers and parents of our students. The group has no formal name or organization status. We write today to express our sincere concern of students of Lake Orion Community Schools not being challenged enough and prepared for the next steps in their education and success. We specifically sought Lake Orion as our home as a result of the exemplary education our children would receive. The Lake Orion Community School Board of Education Superintendent and Administration are all highly trained and educated to lead our district. However, in these times of a national crisis, we are concerned with a lack of a solid plan to continue challenging and motivating our students. It is unacceptable to communicate to your constituents that work is not mandatory, nor will it be collected or graded. Flip this around and tell the educators to create plans and a curriculum that will not count. What is the motivation thereafter? The response of schoolwork not counting is a disservice to your students and an insult to their potential abilities. Decisions should not be made based on the lack of resources of even thirty percent of the community for the greater of the whole community. Offer the ability for all students who wish and are able to take fourth quarter classes over the summer to catch up for lost instruction. This will allow students to begin the 2020-2021 school year fresh. Money is being saved and should be allocated to resources when the order is lifted. All staff is receiving one hundred percent of their pay, paid by the taxpayers of Lake Orion Community Schools, yet students are getting a grossly less amount of instruction and opportunity to further their education. We expect teaching to continue at the same level, one hundred percent. A lesson plan of three questions, tasks given on Monday morning, does not equate to one hundred percent pay of staff or a full week of education. As such, we expect a one hundred percent full schedule for every day of the week, no different than the expectation of times before mid-March. The board and administration must return better results and collaborate to the expectations of your constituents, your students, and your leaders of tomorrow. From Mike and Adrian Luna and Crystal Pashek."
Okay, without responding to it, I would just say that that sounds more like it would be appropriate for our board meeting on Wednesday versus our topic for this evening, and maybe we should bring that Wednesday as well for reading at that time.
I'm happy to do that. They did send it today and ask it to be read at today's meeting, so that's...
Okay, maybe there was a bit of confusion about it. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we're moving on to our single item for tonight, and that's the reboot of our efforts to conduct the search for our next superintendent. And just to kind of recap where we're at, where we've been, we are partway into the process, and due to extraordinary situation, we've had to put it on pause. But I believe it's a desire of the entire board for us to move forward in this process in a way that speaks to our original plan and our original desire to be fully transparent and thorough in our effort to do so. We've gotten to the point of placing the posting for the position, and we've gotten some responses. John has communicated with those people who did respond to let them know that we had paused the search, and I'm sure that he will be communicating with them any changes that we have. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to John, and John and I have spoken briefly, and I expressed that the sense of the board was that we wanted to move forward, but the question is how and when and where and why, and I think John has some thoughts on that. That will be helpful for our discussion. John?
Okay. I think the best way to approach these kinds of discussions is always just to take a problem-solving approach, right? So let's look at the situation in front of us. What are our options? Pros and cons to each, and then it's going to be up to you folks to decide how you'd like to proceed. My job, of course, is going to be that however you decide to proceed, I will support you fully and do the best I can to make sure that it's a process done with fidelity that gets you the results that you need. So as I see it, you've got three options, and I would welcome, let me get through these, and then I would welcome anybody who would like to jump in if you can recognize any others. But we could pick the process up where we left off and proceed virtually. Some districts have decided to do that. In those cases, I know that what they've communicated is that they are choosing to do so primarily because they, if they were not to do so, they would be in a position to have to bring an interim superintendent on board. And they think especially under the current circumstances, that wouldn't be the ideal thing for them to do. They feel like it's critical for them to move forward. And so while they recognize that we can't, it's going to take some modification of the process, it certainly will, they've decided to go ahead and proceed virtually, and we're doing so. The two parts of the process that are really impacted in particular are the finalist interviews. If you recall, when we have those, what we would normally have is two days set up for finalist interviews. Each of the two finalists, presuming there are two, would come in in the evening to have a second interview with the Board of Education. During the course of that day, we would bring the finalists into the district right around noon or so, and we would schedule meetings throughout the day for the finalists each separately on those separate days to meet with various stakeholder groups. So we would invite staff members in, administrative staff, community members, parents, union leadership, possibly high school students. Identifying those groups would be board decision. Doing this virtually would eliminate that as an option, so we would not be able to proceed with that. Secondly, we had talked about site visits as well for the two finalists, and obviously, as things stand now, that would not be able to happen. So I have had some dialogue with some of these other districts about some alternative that wouldn't be exactly what we talked about. It couldn't possibly replicate those things. One conversation, for example, has been maybe after the finalist interviews, adding a virtual town hall where community members, staff members, whoever could submit questions either beforehand or during. I would field the questions. I would ask the questions of the finalists. Finalists would have a chance to respond. We would do that for a fixed period of time. Again, that's a substitute for the other things that we would normally do. So just to be clear, I had mentioned to you before, I believe, that our organization's been doing searches for over twenty years, and over time, we work to get the process to a point where we think it works ideally. To proceed virtually like that, I don't believe we could say that it's ideal from that standpoint, but I think it's more a matter of need. If your circumstance dictates that you cannot wait or you simply choose not to and feel like you have to move forward, then I think we have to accept that we're going to have to go forward with the process that's not kind of the tried and true process that we're accustomed to and that we had agreed upon. But, you know, again, can we make that work? I mean, certainly we can, and we would, and we would make the best of it that we possibly could. So as I see it, that is one option that we can proceed with. Another would be to stand pat and plan to proceed as soon as the social distancing is relaxed. Whenever we're at a point when you folks can get back together and hold a meeting together as you normally would, and we can then conduct interviews as we had planned to, whenever that time would be, we would pick the process back up where we left it and start from there. What that would require almost certainly then, though, is that you would have to, it would be past that June thirtieth date when Marion is expected to leave, and so somehow you'd have to look at filling that gap that would occur if this process now goes past June thirtieth, which I think it almost certainly would. The third option, as I see it, would be we would delay until a set time. So rather than just say, whenever social distancing is relaxed, in order to provide some certainty, you can look forward and say that, and again, this is contingent on you being able to fill the gap from July first until whatever time you agreed upon. But if you were to say, for example, we're going to pick the process back up in the fall, and with the goal being that we're going to target the first of January to have a new superintendent in place by then, first day of the second semester, even the start of the following school year, and then we would keep the process on hold. I would inform current applicants, inform them that that was the case. I would think under that circumstance, either of those last two circumstances, my intent would be to inform current applicants that the applications they submitted would still be valid. They would not have to resubmit. But I think with a time lag, we would probably want to, when we reopen the process, possibly anyway, repost for, even if it was a short period of time. Circumstances could change. You could feasibly have a candidate or two drop out. Perhaps they've gotten employment elsewhere. Their circumstance may have changed. On the other hand, by reposting, you might be able to attract additional applicants that for whatever reason chose not to apply or were not able to apply this last time. So I see those three options: proceeding now virtually, simply keeping it on indefinite hold, waiting until that social distancing is relaxed, and then picking it up at that time, or delaying until a time that we establish now, assuming that at that designated time, things would be back to normal enough that we could reinstate the process and go through and do it with fidelity as planned. So tell me if that makes sense to you. Let me know if you have any questions. And let me know certainly if you think that I've missed anything in terms of options that are available.
Okay, so questions for John? Yes, Steve, please.
Thank you. Thank you, John, first of all, for all you do. Before the crisis started, it started slowly, obviously, and then it picked up speed. I'm curious, as a board member, maybe Jim, you know, and the question I had before the crisis started, were you satisfied, John? Were you happy? Because I remember when you were hired officially, that you were predicting an adequate and very nice selection of applicants. Now, in your opinion, did that cut short because of the crisis? Or did you have many applicant, people apply, I should say, prior to the crisis? Because I would assume that you had a response prior to the crisis. And before you answer, whoever's in charge of the Zoom, forgive my technology terms, if I'm to be muted or deleted, please let me know why and for what reason. Because I don't think it's professional or polite to mute me without me knowing. Thank you.
Okay, so, excuse me, Julie, go ahead.
I was just going to let Steve know. We've asked all board members to be on mute, except for the president facilitating the meeting, and until you have a question or comment, which we're doing the raise your hand process, and then unmute. So if I've noticed, I'm facilitating tonight, so if I notice somebody's not on mute, I'm just going to mute it just so we don't pick up background noise like traffic or dogs barking or...
Yeah, I have no dogs here, just so you know. My son already left. I speak for my B cell. I do know the last Zoom meeting, I went to do a roll call, and I was muted, and nobody could hear me. Mr. Taylor saw me nod, and he spoke on my behalf, and I just don't want to be in that situation again. It's not very professional.
Yeah, no, sorry. It might have been a lag with the unmute, but we'll try to get better. You know, we're all just kind of getting used to this, so... But you will see yourself on mute sometimes.
It's just a point of order that I like to know as a person.
We'll stay on it, Steve.
All right, I'm ready to listen to John's answer. Thank you.
Okay, I don't believe that, even though the application window hadn't closed when all of this happened, I don't believe it impacted the application process. So in terms of the number of applications, quality of applications, I would say that it met expectations. And so I don't think that had an impact. Again, I'm thinking if there's a large enough delay, I think that's when we'd have to consider. Again, I did reach out to all of the applicants. I let them know what was happening. I did not have anybody indicate to me that at this point, they're no longer interested. My presumption is that they all still are, and I did let them know already that their applications would remain valid and that they didn't have to do anything differently, and then I would just simply contact them once I had some further direction for them. So again, where I think if we pick it up after another significant delay, we may want to consider the fact that at that point, I'd ask again. Perhaps they'd all stay, and I don't know, but even if so...
Sorry to interrupt, John. You're not asking again just for the hope to get more applicants, correct?
No, no. It is just as a courtesy, because again, when there's this kind of a lag, suppose somebody, it does happen, had applied for another position somewhere, and perhaps they've been successful. Or if their personal situation had changed, family situation, work situation, and for whatever reason, that caused them to rethink the application. The tricky part is when I communicate that, the way I do it is to strongly encourage that they... I would hope that they still remain interested. I would hope that they still are going to keep their application live. But simply to let me know in advance, because we don't want to go through the process of when you, when I do share the applicants with you, I don't want you to be selecting from a group or perhaps a couple of them. You may choose them to interview only to find out afterward that they're no longer interested, so... But no, that wouldn't be for the purpose of strengthening the field. It would be circumstantial.
Thanks for being direct regarding that question I had for you.
Sure. Thank you, Steve. Dana?
Okay, there you go. Thank you, John, and thanks for the options. I want to say one of the reasons that I put your firm number one is because I did like the level of due diligence that you proposed. You were the only one who proposed onsite visit, you know, having the stakeholders come together in meetings and those types of things. And I would love to stick to that, but just to put my opinion out there, I don't think right now that that's going to be a realistic... Day to day, you know, it's always a conversation at my house, like, what do you think we are going to go back? How do you think we're going to go back? You know, like today, my husband and I, our thing is like, okay, once they have a solid antibodies test, then we'll see if we'll want to go back on the world, you know? So, and that can change two hours from now. I don't really know, you know, and it's so uncertain. So when I've been thinking a lot about this lately, I have to weigh what I was really committed to and what my ideal was versus what is the new reality for now. And so I'm interested to hear everyone's opinions and discussions, and obviously, I'm a very open-minded person. But right now, I'm leaning towards maybe doing it more the virtual way, even though that's not ideal. I do believe that we need to move forward on this process, and I think right now, that's going to be the most realistic way. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. Others? Jake?
Hey, John. The question sort of follows up to Steve. So Steve asked about the pool of candidates that we got that was high-quality. And I was wondering if you had a sense that any of the three options that we could choose could lead to an impairment of candidate, meaning if they're looking for other jobs, if we don't go virtual, do we, do you get a sense we risk on losing out? Or if we switch our timeline to be a date certain to hire on January first or July first next year, you have a sense of how that could impact the pool of candidates that have already been identified?
You know, this is all the great unknown, right? That we've never dealt with anything like this before. So I'd take my response for what it's worth. To a certain extent, it's pure speculation and guesswork on my part. So I think there's, I will say this, that I think a lot of the applicants, my sense is that for many of them, they're specifically applying to Lake Orion and particularly interested in Lake Orion. They're not necessarily applying elsewhere. But I also, at the same time, I'm realistic enough to know that there's not a play to all of them, right? So for some of them, given that there are other districts proceeding virtually, it's possible, right? There's a possibility that something could come up with someone. And again, what's hard to predict is if it goes forward by a number of months, you know, again, how is their circumstance going to change? If I had to predict, and I guess you're asking me just basic opinion, my guess would be that the vast majority of them would, they would keep the application live, they would remain interested, they'd still be hopeful of being selected as Lake Orion's next superintendent. I would expect so. If not all of them, if you were fortunate, it would be all of them. I think if we were to lose anybody, I wouldn't guess you're going to lose a lot. I would guess one or two, perhaps. That is strictly a guess, though, Jake, and so again, please take that for what it's worth.
Like, it's good to hear, it's all a question of how many other jobs are out there? Do you get a sense that, you know how many other districts in Oakland County or North Macomb, you know, the competitive districts that were around? How many others are looking for superintendent in this area?
The only other one right now, Wayne Westland in Wayne County is going out, but they're already down to two finalists. And so, you know, that ship has sailed. South Lion is a district that I'm facilitating that search. They have decided to proceed. That, I'm meeting with them later this week, actually, to share the field of applicants, so... So that one's live, but beyond that, there are a couple of smaller districts. New Haven comes to mind in Macomb County. Centerline, I believe, I've heard of, but there are not a ton. The only one that's out there now that I would even suggest would be, from an applicant standpoint, anywhere comparable to Lake Orion, where you could be attracting potentially the same field of applicants, would be South Lion. But that was already starting anyway, and so really, I think from that standpoint, that's probably a non-factor. Things could change. Other superintendents could decide to retire, and we haven't heard about it yet, so there could be others pop up. At this moment, I have not heard of anything else in the area opening up.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Jake. Others? Yes, Nate? It's Michigan. You're pointing to Michigan. Go ahead, Nate.
I was going to offer Burgett to go, because I think she raised her hand at the same time. But since I'm on, John, thanks for joining us. Good to see you. Is there an option that, or what would the option look like if we were to blend your option one and two? Proceed virtually and stand pat? I'm looking at the timeline that you had prepared for us initially, and we're about three weeks, it would be three full weeks just to do first, or the finalist interviews. If we reopened the posting for a week, screened for a week, and did first round, we'd be in the fourth week before we'd be looking at final. And maybe we even want to put an extra week in there for either the application process or the screening process. So would there be a viable option where we did a blended approach? We planned for first-round interviews to be virtual, and if the social distance rules allow them to be in person, that's awesome. And if not, we do them virtual, and then second round, we could do either virtual or hold until we could do those in person. The expectation would be four weeks from now, the way things are trending right now, there's a fair probability that there will be some relaxation and hopefully the potential to do in-person interviews, and that would allow us to be four weeks ahead of the game as the rules change on it, rather than starting the process when the rules change. Have you thought about that? Might that be a workable solution?
You know, we're making it up on the fly here, right? So, you know, again, I think it's important to look at any and all options. Certainly, we could do that as well. I would suggest if we were to start up again now, I think at this point, it hasn't been very long, and I don't think there'd be a need to repost. I was only looking at that as an option if there was a significant delay in the process. So I think if you were to move forward now, the posting closed still fairly recently enough that I don't know that it would make great sense to go ahead and repost now. So if what you're suggesting is that what we would do then is schedule the meeting where it would just be myself and the rest of the folks who are part of the meeting now, presumably. That's where we'd go into closed session. I would share the applicant field with you. That gets a little bit tricky too, but it could be done. I have not done that yet. I'll get a chance to practice it with South Lion this Thursday, so I can maybe work out some kinks. But it might be a little bit trickier to share that with you under these circumstances, but we could do it. You could select, we would then go ahead and reschedule the first-round interviews. I would contact those applicants, and as you said, could we proceed electronically with that? Yes. If what you're asking is could we get to that point and then simply place things on hold and kind of just give it some time to see if relatively soon we'd be in a position then to bring the finalists in onsite? We could. The wild card there is that we don't know how long that would be. We might be having this conversation again down the road if another long period of time passes to decide, do we go ahead and proceed or do we need to wait, right? But we could. The only risk I could think of, and how great a risk, I don't know, is if you got down to two finalists and something happened with one of the finalists, and they had a drop, you'd leave yourself with one candidate left. Whereas if you have the whole field in front of you now, you would not necessarily be in that position. Again, if you're asking me to predict, if I'm an applicant and I'm one of two finalists for a district like Lake Orion, I am very likely going to keep myself available for that. But I think there'd be at least a slight risk.
I think the spot, I think the spot we'd probably find ourselves in is deciding whether we would do the final interviews virtual or in person with the hope that four weeks from now, we're able to do it in person. Do you think that because we did close or postpone the posting, I didn't catch the exact, I didn't look back at the exact date, but it was a little over a week, I think, before it was supposed to close? Did we, do you think we disadvantaged the pool or left anybody out who was waiting till closer to the deadline to apply? But would we want to repost it just in case we missed anybody, or do you have a pretty good read on the field?
I doubt that we missed anybody. I think knowing that the application was still open. And again, at that time, nobody really knew. Remember that schools had been shut down presumably for, it was, I forget what the first date was, mid-April, maybe? And so there was not necessarily reason to believe that things were permanently closing and that... But I think there was an expectation on people's part at that time. It was early that maybe things were just going to pick up after the schools reopened. So I think it was probably after the time that the application window closed that it started to become apparent that this was pretty grim and that schools might not reopen. So if that makes sense, I think at the time, people still had the belief that we were going to be back in session at some time and be finishing the school year face-to-face. So from that standpoint, I think, again, if I were an applicant, there was a week to go. I was planning to submit, and then this happened. I don't think I would have been deterred, and nor did I hear from anybody. People are typically pretty good. So if there's an applicant that was highly interested, very likely, they would have called me and said, tell me what's going on. Do you think it's still, should I still go ahead and submit the application? They're typically pretty good about reaching out and looking for guidance and reaching out with questions if they have them. So I'm going to guess that we didn't lose anybody from there.
That's helpful. I would have, in my head, I was wondering if we were needing or wanting to open it for a week and just as a last call, because we did postpone it rather than close it, if you will, on that. But if you've got a pretty good sense, and if nobody reached out to you and said, hey, make sure, make sure you let me know when this thing comes back on. Well, with that, you know, I know we'll talk more about it. I prefer that type of approach to move forward and get through the couple of, because there are a couple of weeks. Because there are a couple of weeks that I think don't, that we don't lose fidelity of the process doing it virtual. At least getting through those next two steps on there. So that's a view I prefer. Thank you.
Hey, Burgett.
Thank you. Hi, hi, John. Nice to see you. I have a couple of things going around in my head with these processes and so I'm gonna methodically work through my thoughts. Getting my thoughts out and if I need to backtrack at any some point when you're answering them, I'm happy to do that. Nate's approach intrigued me and one of the questions I have, since that's fresh right here in front of us. If we go through that, if we were to go through a bit of a virtual approach, have round one done. Have finalists and then have this pause, then we have to hit pause and we don't know how long that would be. Does, is there a downside to that? Or even for the candidates, is there a downside for the candidates in that not knowing when? We might be able to continue that. And does that as the board for the consideration of board members, is that impede our fidelity of. Holding fast on making sure our community is involved? Are we, are we good with moving forward, not knowing exactly what that move forward is? I'll let you answer that.
All right. I think. It would be a little bit of an awkward situation for a candidate to be selected as a finalist. And then kind of be in limbo for a while. So how that would negatively impact them, I don't know. But again, I think it's. So if I'm a high-level administrator in another district, I mean, I'm a central administrator, I'm a superintendent in another district. Everybody thereby now knows that I'm a finalist. They know that knew that I was an applicant. Now they know that I'm a finalist. And they know that I kind of have one foot out the door. But I still have one foot in and nobody really knows which way this is gonna go. And if this drags on. For too long, that could be a really uncomfortable situation, both for the finalist and I think for the district that they're working in as well. So I, it's not the greatest thing. If it were for a short period of time, and that is occurring or has occurred in Wayne Westland, they had. We actually had the. Finalist interview scheduled for the first Monday after the governor closed the schools. And so they put the brakes on. As soon as the governor extended, they decided they couldn't wait any longer. And we actually tomorrow night are going to have those two finalist interviews with Wayne Westland virtually. So. And the candidates certainly were kind of troopers and they said, no problem, you know, I remain interested. I'm gonna hang in there. But I always try to put myself in their shoes and again, I think it would be. Uncomfortable and I do think about the districts that they work for too. So if it wasn't a terribly long period of time, I don't think it would be anything to worry too much about. If it were a relatively short delay. I would become more concerned if it really started to drag on. In that way, and especially if it began to flirt with the end of this school year and the start of the next one. Part of it bear in mind is that if that district is about to lose a high-level administrator. They want to know sooner than later because they want to be in a position to then to be able to post and find. Adequate candidate to feel, to fill that position as well.
Absolutely. That makes a lot of sense. I appreciate that, the insight on that. The other things I wanted to ask you about, and I think you presented this language when you talked about number two and number three, both of them. And the need for, at some point, needing to fill a gap for Lake Orion. Can you enlighten us a little bit more about what you mean by that?
If I understand correctly, current superintendent is scheduled to leave the district as of June 30th, right? So if you were to delay the process. If it's indefinite, and presuming that that's not rectified anytime within the next few weeks. Again, you're almost certainly gonna bypass June 30th and before this process is done. You're gonna hit, go past that June 30th mark, especially if in scenario three. You set a date fairly far off in the future, January 1st, January 30th, whatever. You can't operate without a superintendent. So you simply would have to fill that gap. The one complication there too is that I would. Suggest. Sometimes what districts will do, if you're looking to have an interim. Candidate and you're gonna look at somebody within the district. My strong advice would be not to turn to somebody who's an applicant for the position long-term. That really can muddy the waters. So I would think if you have somebody who's made it known. That they're interested in becoming your next superintendent and they're throwing their hat in the ring. You wouldn't want it to be that person. And so you'd want to consider what your options were. And again, I think with, I'll use South Lion as the example. They have an interim superintendent in place now. Their superintendent left mid-year for another position. That interim superintendent who's a retiree, retired superintendent. Cannot stay past June 30th. So they would be in a position to have to search for another interim and especially given these circumstances, that was part of what led them to decide. And they didn't, they felt probably in their situation too, they had an internal candidate. And were reluctant to put that person in place. So that was partly what prompted them. They may have looked at it differently. If they were in a position to be able to comfortably fill the interim role and know that things could proceed still relatively smoothly. In a lot of ways, I think that would all be about. Transition and you ensure that you're not gonna have a significant gap and a fall off or problems. Because you have to transition for a month, two months, six months, whatever the case might be. And I think that's a factor that you have to consider. Does that make sense? I think if this process goes past June 30th. And Marion's gone, you have got to find a way to rectify that. You've got to have somebody sitting in that superintendent chair. Until it's filled in this way through the finalization of this process.
Got it. Thank you for that, for your input.
Yeah, I was curious about that because I just don't know the rule. There's no period of time you can have a vacancy or if it's a. Is there a dependency on where you are in the process? I'm just unfamiliar with what the rule is.
You know, if it's a very brief period of time, if it's a week or two, you could, you could have somebody. Kind of technically designated as the go-to person if something were to come up. Where it should be the superintendent making those decisions, but legally, you must have someone identified as the superintendent. You have to.
Thanks.
Yes, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Weaven. John, thank you for your very thorough. Answers to all the board questions and I thank my fellow board members because I learn from every and each one of you. I think you're implying that we're in a fortunate situation that we have, Ms. Genopoulos, and I want to make it very clear that I've not spoken to Ms. Genopoulos. Specifically for the last three weeks for any reason. And if I did, it was by tax just to say happy holidays or what have you. I would not be in favor of renewing a contract per se with Ms. Genopoulos for the benefit of everybody, her included. I'm just thinking as a lawyer now, and forgive me if I am talking as a lawyer, but I'm just thinking the way I've been trained. I think we're in a fortunate position that if we have Marion to agree to go month by month until we have the opportunity. And she's a great leader. I think we're all aware of that, but with a great leader comes a great cabinet and I want to give credit to the cabinet. And no one person can do anything on their own, especially during a time of crisis. I mean, we can just look at our national government and our local governments. My question, John, is how long can, if Ms. Genopoulos agrees to stay on and we would be. Fortunate and blessed if she agrees to stay on, can we keep her as a. If she agrees, it's her choice and her attorney. So I would hope she would get legal advice on this. And I would think Mr. Arnett would advise Mr. Weaven or the board as a whole. How long would be feasible to keep Ms. Genopoulos on for this practical? Transition and we paid you. And we respect you and I believe you're a local resident in our community, right, John?
I am. I live in Rochester.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought you lived in Lake Orion. All right, you're close enough though to know what's going on. I mean, from a community point of view. So I would hope. Or what you implied, I think, and I can't put words in your mouth as an attorney. Are you implying that we're fortunate enough to have Ms. Genopoulos willing to stay on? And if that's a yes. I can't agree for it to be on forever. And I can't agree as an attorney to get muddled up in contracts, but legally you can go month to month. Am I correct in your. Field, the world, the teacher world? I'm sorry, say that again?
Education world, yes. Certainly. I didn't mean to imply anything about Marion, very honestly. I'm simply saying that. Again, my understanding is that she's leaving on June.
It's a good thing. I know she's leaving on the 30th. We all know that, but what happens after the 30th? I'm being direct with you. Ms. Genopoulos, please stay on and if she's willing to stay on. My concern is we can't have her stay on for three years. That's not a service to her or to us. We would be blessed if she says yes for six months, for example. But we need guidance from you or I need guidance from you.
Well, Steve, I think that'd be. An issue that the board would have to discuss versus what John's involvement would be. I'm sure he's got various experiences through all the years he's been doing this, but.
And I'm willing to support his recommendation, but I want some kind of guidance is what I'm asking.
Right, right. I think guidance would come from Rick and from council and. If, if. We were to determine that. That was what we wanted to do, we'd have to talk with Marion about that as well.
Thank you, sir. All right. But I do have a concern, Jim, to that effect.
I understand, Steve.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Let's go over to Scott because we haven't heard from Scott yet.
Thank you. Thanks, John, for all the information. I know that this has been something that's weighed on all of our minds a lot lately. And I really appreciate the one, two, three. Kind of, you know, à la carte menu. I would lean more towards the. The number one and sort of a blend with number two. But I guess my biggest question is. If this was you and you were the board president of Lake Orion Community Schools, what would you do? Because you've done it so much and we hired you as the expert and this is totally, you know. Not necessarily what's gonna happen, but I would just like to know what your true feelings are. From these three points and what you've heard so far.
First, I'll share my, in all honesty, and I think I told you before, if you hire me, that's what you're gonna get, right?
Appreciate that.
What I think. Understanding, by the way, that I work for you and you call the shots and ultimately this is totally your call as to where we go from here. And I'm gonna support you, whatever you decide to do. So. My bias is from an MLI perspective. And again, I think about the fact that we have. You know, you labor over this process and. You know, through experience, we fine tune, we tweak, we consult as an organization with one another. What? What are you doing that's working? Are you doing anything a little bit differently at this step, at that step? And we continue to kind of massage it to get it to the point where we think it works as ideally as it can. So. My bias, I suppose, is I'd love to see us be able to do this process thoroughly. And do it just as we had outlined it, which would require waiting. But having said that, I would think the companion to that. Is you'd have to know that you would be able to have somebody in place as an interim that you would be comfortable with. And that where you feel that that gap then before you brought your new superintendent on, wouldn't be detrimental to the district. If that makes sense, I think you'd have to be able to know that part of it first, I believe. You know, could we afford the delay in terms of being able to put somebody in as the interim and be comfortable with that? And if so, and if that would allow us then to do this process from the beginning to end, exactly as we had planned to. And engage the community every bit as much as we intended to. That would be my bias. I would love to see us be able to do that. But there again, there are so many factors at play here. That I, that's my honest opinion, but. Whatever you choose to do, we're going to do it in the best way that we can. We're gonna make it work. And, you know, I'm confident enough that. You're gonna end up with the result that you need, no matter how we proceed with this. I think a lot of it is. It's important to engage the community. It's important that they feel like they're an integral part of this too. That goes a long way once you make the hiring decision too. Even if you had bumps in the road with the new superintendent and hopefully that wouldn't happen. But if it feels a little bit more like it wasn't just the board independently making that decision, but the community felt like they were a part of it too. I think there tends to be more buy-in right out of the gate and it's better for you and it's better for your new superintendent, which. Again, is part of the reason where I'd love to see you be able to do it as thoroughly as we have planned it.
Thank you.
Okay, so a few other hands. Yes, Dana.
I'm sorry, I keep hitting the microphone instead of the other thing, but okay, I'm back. Thank you. And I appreciate everyone's input. I think this has been a really great conversation. I, just one thing that I'm thinking about, this is an election year. And we have four, there will be four seats open. So four of us are either gonna, some of us, I don't know what anyone's doing and I don't want to talk about that. That's the conversation, but the conversation is none of us are guaranteed. There's four of us that are not guaranteed to be on the board. Starting January 1st. And I don't, it's not a personal thing with me if I get to choose the superintendent or not. But what it's about is I don't know that we want to just kind of like leave this process. Well, we're just gonna kind of go along with it. And see what happens. And then January 1st, you could technically have four new board members and then. Uh-oh, like no one knows what happened and what was happening the whole year before in the process. And I don't know if that's really benefiting the community or not. So that's just kind of something that's weighing out there on a timeline. Because honestly, we don't know what's gonna happen. We don't know from day to day when we're gonna be back together and those types of things. I mean, I wish I could say four weeks for sure, we're gonna be, you know, ready to like rock and roll, but we don't know. So. I think I am at least still in the thing where we should start continuing to do this virtually. Then if we are able to do the final interviews, like in person, that would be great. But if not, I would even be in favor of doing that virtually because your points are well taken. I don't want to leave someone just kind of hanging there. It puts them in a bad position in their current job. It puts that district in a bad position. Knowing that they may have someone who's leaving. I think that if we start this, we're gonna like see it through. So if we go along with my kind of preference here, what would be the timeline to hire someone then? I mean, I don't know if it would still be by June, but just have a July 1st date. That would probably be very aggressive. I don't know.
That's a good question. I'm reaching back. From my phone and I'm gonna open up my calendar and just try to think this through a little bit. It's a great question. So let's suppose that. I think the soonest we would be able to, per my schedule, I'm tied up in the evenings all of next week with. With other districts. So the soonest we would be able to. Meet would be, they have that first meeting where I would be able to share the applicants with you. Looks like it would likely be the first week of May. And then that would mean the soonest you could then conduct the first round interviews would be. The week of May 11. You know, presumably with that, if we were to pick it up like that and get things rolling, I think there's still enough time and as I look at this. That you could very likely complete the process and have the new superintendent ready to start by July 1st. I think that could still happen.
All right. Great info. Thank you, John. I appreciate it.
Others. Yes, Jake.
Quick question. It just struck me as you said that, having interviews. That before we had talked about, we would have interviews in person in the board office and we would tape them and put them out there because. But now if we have to hold this virtually, where are we at with the state directive? Do we have to hold these. Virtually open meetings and then other candidates could. Unethically, they would be what it would be. They could listen to our questions and have a data prep.
So based on the guidelines for you to be able to conduct your business virtually. So based on the guidelines for you to be able to conduct your business virtually in this way, you have to give the public access, as you know, right? And so that would mean anybody in the public would have the opportunity to view the interviews live, including the applicants. We've talked about this as an organization, Michigan Leadership Institute. And simply what we're doing is reaching out to the candidates, the interviewees, and we're just appealing to their ethics and basically saying that we need to be able to trust that even though you would be able to access the interview and you would be able to view others interviewing if you're coming later. We're simply asking you to be professional, to be ethical and not to do so. And frankly, I mean, through that dialogue, we have to believe that the vast majority of applicants are that type of person and I would like to believe that if we simply stress that with them and ask that of them, that we'd be able to trust them to honor them. Would we guarantee it? No. I feel comfortable.
Thank you. Just wanted the clarification, so thank you for that.
Others? Well, let me share a few thoughts. Having been down this road a few times and having seen the elements of the entire search and been involved in those elements, I would have a strong preference for maintaining most, if not all, the elements of our original plan. There is great value in meeting in person with an individual who's interviewing for a job. And there's greater value for an individual to have the opportunity to interact face to face with staff at all levels and all roles and observe the district. And there is even greater value for the opportunity for board members to observe a finalist's home district, to see exactly what day to day life is there, get feedback from employees in that district. And I can tell you that in one of our searches in the past, as a result of a site visit, the favorite to be selected ended up not being selected because of the experience that the team that went out to do the site visits discovered both with that candidate and with another candidate who ultimately got the job. And it was very, very revealing. So based on that and based on the timeline you just laid out, John, to expedite the search process by June 30, if we applied that same expedited approach, once we resume school in September or sooner, depending on what the ultimate plan is, is it possible we could set a date of having a hire made by November 1st? I appreciate what Dana said about the upcoming elections and I think it's very, very important that this board make the selection of the next superintendent. That being said, there's a high likelihood that all of us sitting here today may not be here when this superintendent concludes their stint at Lake Orion. So I think it's important that this group make the selection, but I also think it's quite important that we have the opportunity for those interactions that can be really very telling beyond just the words that are spoken in an interview. And I guess my question would be, is it possible for us immediately following Labor Day to conduct this process and have it concluded by November 1st?
I think given where we're at in the process, you know, again, what it takes now is once you decide to restart, now I'll say this, I think the extra step, although if we knew what was coming in advance, we planned for it, is if we were to wait that long, I would advise we probably want to repost for at least a short period of time.
Maybe August 1st.
Possibly. So, but you would have to factor that in, but then you know, it's a matter again of having that selection meeting where you view the applicants, select who you want to interview. By the following week, you could start first round interviews. Once we get to that point, the process moves relatively quickly. It could be that meeting, interviews the following week, second round interviews as soon as the following week after that, site visit then the next week, and then you come back together to make your decision. So what is that, four to five weeks, I think, once you start that process up feasibly, you could go from beginning to end.
My thinking here is that should we run into a delay in starting school for whatever reason that we don't have crystal ball here, that our backup plan could be to conduct the virtual hire. So we still ensure that no later than November 1st, that November 1st would be a hard stop that we would ensure that we would have a new hire in place. But I think and I know people who haven't been through it can't know what that, that part of the experience is about because it is very revealing. But the opportunity to do a site visit and the opportunity for observing interaction with our staff in my experiences has been very valuable. Maybe Rick and John, you can speak to that because you've been through searches.
Rick, you want to go ahead?
Go ahead, Rick.
There we go.
There you go.
Clearly you were trying to unmute me when I was moving the box around on my screen. All right. Yeah, Jim, in response to your question there regarding the visits, I would say to you that in my experiences, the districts that I've been associated with that have done that found it very, very insightful and useful, as you indicated. And it does, and having been through it actually myself in the past. It is a, it is a lot different than just, as you said, someone sitting in a room answering questions. You get a true sense of who those individuals are when you get a chance to interact with them, see them interact with others, ask questions of people who are associated with them in a different setting. I think there's a lot of value to that.
Thanks.
I would just add that if we didn't think it was valuable and important, it wouldn't be part of our project.
Okay. Yes, Steve.
After hearing Scott, I think you had a lot of great questions and then I, Jim, I thank you for refreshing my mind. Did it say unmuted? Can you hear me, please?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Thank you, sir. It refreshes my memory from Oxford. The onsite visits were very beneficial and I'm not going to volunteer to do onsite visits for our Lake Orion only because it was such a great experience for me. I'd like one of my fellow board members, should we go that route, to experience that. With that said, Jim, I think all of us as board members, as board members, respect you and your opinion or at least I look up to you as a leader. That's why you're in that position. No matter who our president is, I always have respect for the seat that our president sits in. Your comments are well said and Mr. Arnett backed them. So if we can find a mixture of what Mr. Taylor said and what you're saying, I think what you're saying, Jim, makes a lot of sense to me. And as long as we have the ability to run the district in an A-plus situation, as we have been in the past, I think your comments, Jim, are on the mark and I would support them. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Others? Scott?
Thanks, Jim. I appreciate your comments. One of my biggest issues is, I guess, kind of kicking the can down the road scenario as far as if we push off making any sort of decision now or any kind of process and wait until we can actually all convene, we are then taking a leader from another district in the middle of a marking period or a middle of a semester to bring him here. So that's, that's one of my big, has been one of my big things because I know that everything is, you know, we're going to take so-and-so superintendent and then they're going to take so-and-so superintendent and it goes down the line. And I realize that's how it works, but to me, this is the time that it needs to happen. I understand that we are in an unprecedented time that nobody has ever dealt with. And I think people are going to look to us for how we're handling it and how South Lion is handling it. So I would still, in my experience, which I don't have any experience obviously with a superintendent hire, but just from all the listening and all the facts and all the data gathering, I would still go with a virtual type process to at least start and get going with.
Burget?
I was actually going to say something similar to what Scott said because when we talked about this process initially, we talked about the perfect timing of this and how we had the time and we're moving into the spring and the timing of this was perfect at the end of the school year and you launch. And it's really difficult to do it in the middle of a school year for many of the reasons that Scott just listed. So I wanted to ask John Silvery if he thought that was, I hear all the great things that you say about this, but my mind, we have, it's due process for us to look at every angle we can on this to make the best decision for Lake Orion. And so I'm just wondering if while we want the best process, are we hindering the process by doing it in the middle of the year? Are we hindering our candidate pool? Are we hindering ourselves? What do you think?
My experience is that if you have someone who covets the Lake Orion position and that's where they would like to be, when the position comes open is, it's highly unlikely that that would deter them, whether it's now or whether it would be the fall. I'm going to give you an example and maybe this won't be doing myself any favors, question my dedication, but when I took my first superintendency, I started in April and my second superintendency, I started in October. Neither one of those was ideal and there was some angst on my part, very honestly, about leaving the districts I was working for at those times of year and it was not ideal. I think I approached it the right way and I think the right person would in that I did, I worked like a sled dog basically to make sure that I did everything I could do for the district I was in to make for a smooth transition. And I made sure that that happened at the same time preparing to take the position I was going to and be prepared to hit the ground running there. So certainly the point's well taken by Scott. That's not an ideal thing for the district where you'd be taking the candidate from. It's just not, right? There's no getting around that and I wouldn't sugarcoat that. But I think from a candidate perspective, I don't think it would be a very high risk, perhaps minimal, but not very high that somebody would drop out because of the timing. I would think that if Lake Orion is where they want to be, you have to realize that the likelihood is that whoever gets this position is going to be there for a while and this position's open now, but it's not going to be open again for a good while. So if I want to be in Lake Orion, I have to jump now when the position's there. And if that is now or if that is in the fall, I'm still going to go ahead and apply and I'm still going to do what I can and make the best of a tough situation. So but sure, you know, it's not the greatest thing for the district where we're pulling their superintendent or assistant superintendent, whatever the case might be in October, November, whatever the case might be.
We've heard the value of the in-person pieces from the people who have been through searches before. And that being said, would what would your thoughts be regarding a, a set plan right now to begin the process following Labor Day and complete it by November 1st, whether in person or virtual, should we discover we have some obstacles that were unforeseen? Any thoughts on that? Is that something that any board members could subscribe to? Nate?
I don't know what I'm being asked to subscribe to, the November timeline or virtual?
For a set schedule right now that would begin following Labor Day with an eye toward our original plan to be executed in expedited fashion that would be concluded no later than November 1st, preferably before. And that should we run into some unforeseen obstacles that would prevent us from doing the in-person that our fallback position would be to do it virtually and still conclude the process no later than November 1st to enable this board to make the decision on the next superintendent.
So if I break those out into two things, completing the process virtually, I think we can do successfully and confidently the timeline and I totally, totally heard you, Jim, the timeline I would not support. I appreciated, John, how you described this, approaching this with the problem solving side. And when I think through that and say, well, if we're comfortable doing it virtually and I look at the steps in the process, the biggest one that we're missing is the site visit. And so from a problem solving side, my thinking challenges us to say, how do we really embrace innovative solutions and first best only thinking? And say, how would we do a proxy for a site visit? If we are not able to do it, because a site visit at the start of the school year is going to be strange times and it's going to be unusual times anyway. So we're off, we're off of normality in any scenario here on it. So I'm more inclined to say, if we're comfortable doing it virtually later, can we become comfortably, comfortable doing it now virtually? And figure out what would we need to add to the mix to say, what does a, what does an equivalent of that insight or a proxy for it? It's not going to be the equivalent, right? But what would be a proxy for it and problem solve around the one thing on the page that goes away, which is a site visit? So that's where I would, I would support the second part of it, doing it virtually. The timing, I would really push us hard to say, how can we figure out how to make it work in the springtime we're in now, which gives the new leader the chance to start with the start of the year, gives a whole lot of benefits on it. So that'd be my view of it.
Well, I have to beg to differ with you on that, that there's only one thing that we're forfeiting and by going virtually. I think there are multiple things that we forfeit. It's the community engagement in person. It's the interaction in the district with staff. There are a whole host of things that are, are lost.
Yeah, I thought John shared a few mitigating, he shared a few mitigating strategies for those. Sorry if I was unclear. I totally, that's absolutely factual. He shared a couple mitigating strategies. So there's alternatives that are not ideal. The only one I didn't hear a mitigating strategy for was site visit. So that's where my head was because you're right, the face-to-face goes away, but there were approaches in there.
Okay, others? Scott?
Again, I would agree with Nate. I think that the, the scenario that John laid out is definitely doable. I think that Burget's kind of walking down the same path. I think that Bergen's kind of walking down the same path as far as Nate also and as well as Dana.
Well, let Bergen speak for herself on that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So I agree with Nathan.
Bergen?
Well, actually I am still in favor of doing the full process. It's unfortunate that this crisis fell in at this time and has put us in this position, but we do have to come up with a plan of how to proceed. And I do see, I see Nate's points very well, but I feel strongly about our original commitment to our community to involve them in the process as much as possible. And if we can duplicate that in the fall and make that happen, that, and if we think that will be okay with our candidate pool and that we're not the first ones that would be implementing a superintendent, that this has been done before, I would like to see us continue in that route.
Jake?
I would rather go sooner than later. And I think it could be something that nobody has mentioned yet. I would like to have a new superintendent onboard before the start of the new school year. Coming back to the next school year after the way this one ended is going to make the start of the next school year more challenging than anything we've had before. And I would not want to drop a superintendent in a November or a December start date when it's already going to be a turbulent time. I don't want to make that transition a couple of months into the school year, if at all possible. I see the benefits of doing the full process, but I, I, I think that that is a loss, but the benefit of having the person that we want, you know, leading the district for the next several years, starting this challenging time, that's, I would prefer. So to execute that, we do have a little bit of time, but you know, hopefully we could get someone hired by August 1. But looking at it, I would say, I would like to target virtual interviews to be, you know, middle or end of May. And then hopefully the social distancing orders would be locked down and in a reasonable manner, we could conduct finalist interviews at some point in June in person and then have certain groups, local people invited. We would have to follow social distancing. We might have to register people, say, hey, we can only take 20 people into this, this event to meet with the finalist candidate. And we would have to be creative. But that would be my preference is to do it sooner rather than later.
Dana?
I'm really on the same page as Jake. I can't, there's not a lot I can say or add to what he said and his reasons for it. I am extremely disappointed not being able to maybe do this in person and do the site visits. There is huge value in that. But we don't really know what the fall is going to look like and I have a hard time waiting until then. I mean, today is what, April 20th? And this looks drastically different than my March 20th did. And so to me, getting this started, if I have to weigh which one, that's the one I'm going to go with.
Okay, so the consensus I'm hearing is that we want to move forward with virtual search and jettison our previous plan in lieu of a compromise plan. Is that correct? Yes?
Yeah, just a clarifying thing because I thought I heard a little bit different that when I look at the steps in the process, we're doing the same steps in the process. We're doing them differently, right?
Correct. It's not the what, it's the how.
It's the how. Okay, cool.
That's, that is correct. And it is one what as well.
We have to figure out the site visits, right?
But that's the bottom line. We aren't going to figure that one out. There will be, there is no replacement for that and we're going to have to just adjust and move on. Scott?
Would it be possible to, and John, this would be a John question, would it be possible to perhaps, you would ask a candidate, the top three people that you would want us to talk to on a site visit, would that be something that perhaps we could get into a virtual meeting with the two people or the three people that would have went on that site visit to where we could actually have an in-depth conversation with them like we would have had at the school, realizing that that's not watching them in their element, but that would give us an opportunity to, that those folks and we could, you know, feel some emotion or whatever we would possibly feel when we were there.
So the short answer is yes. And what I would say is that if, I'm going to go back to feeling like my job is going to be to support you however you decide to proceed, right? So if you decide to start the process back up and go virtually, I think I would want to take somewhat of the same approach even to how we then implement each of those steps. First round, you certainly could virtually do it like you would otherwise. You're not going to have audience members present, but people can listen in. There would be a way they could provide feedback to you as we would have done before. It's second round where things obviously get very tricky. So I think what I want to do is maybe take a similar approach. Doesn't necessarily have to be in a group dialogue like this, but maybe it could be separately, but just kind of brainstorming, what else could we do? Given what we'd be losing, if we can't bring stakeholder groups in to meet with each of the two finalists as we would have otherwise, what other options do we have and how might we approach that differently virtually? And then the same with the site visit. So Scott, you mentioned one option. I would welcome others too. And I think that would be the mindset that we would have is if this is what we're doing, then what are the options available to us to, even though we can't totally duplicate what we would have done before, how do we do something in lieu of that at least still gives us some benefit, something similar? I will say this was site visit. I think that's going to be the toughest one in that, and I think you may recall me telling you before, I think there's so much to be gained in a site visit from being able to sit down with a group and watch the group facial expression, body language, et cetera. There just is. I've seen that before. You probably have too. You could have one person answering a question. Suppose you have one person in the group saying, oh my God, I think this person is so trustworthy. And you see other people shifting uncomfortably in their chairs as they're hearing that answer. That's very telling, if that makes sense, right?
True.
And I'm not saying this to dissuade you, just to tell you that we could not replicate that. So I would think, again, Scott, you just tossed out one kind of option. Maybe we could do that instead and where it wouldn't give us exactly what we'd get. Could it give us something that's going to be better than not doing anything at all? Sure. And again, what I'd be interested in knowing is that's a conversation starter. What are some other ideas as to how we might go about that differently? So that even though we can't replace it entirely, we'll make the best of it that we can.
Okay, so to kind of wrap this up and next steps, I'm sure that John will want to sit down, piece something together in terms of what those steps look like. I'll communicate with John. We will then decide what our calendar looks like and we'll work that out from here and we'll get this process underway.
Any other questions?
Yes, John.
So I would presume then, the next step in the process was for us to hold a meeting where we would spend the bulk of that meeting in executive session and I would be sharing the applicants with you and having dialogue and you would be making some decisions about who you wanted to interview. So I, that's going to be the most important date to get set and then the rest of the calendar would follow suit. So I would think if I can communicate with you, we can come to agreement on that and then we can start to cobble together the rest of it.
Yeah, if we can come up with some options and then I'll get with Julie, we'll put those out and see how we can lock those dates down and get the process started. Any other questions, comments, conversation? Any other individual comments you want to make? I think we've said enough.
Can I say one thing?
Yes.
I'm rarely at a point where I feel like I've said enough, Jim. I'll just tell you that. I apologize for that.
That's all right.
I really did want to say though, what I appreciate in this dialogue is it does not always happen. So I want to recognize it when it does. There clearly were differences of opinion among the seven board members. But the level of respectful dialogue that took place in the way you were able to respectfully share your opinions and kindly disagree with one another and ultimately come to a decision is I want to give you a lot of credit for that. Again, I've worked with a lot of boards and had a lot of meetings and perhaps far too often it does not happen that way. So great credit to you for that.
Thank you, John.
Go Dragons.
With that, this meeting is adjourned.
Bye, everyone.
Good night.